That we are being televised and recorded for later rebroadcast. We're going to start our meeting tonight honoring our retirees, and I think we have seven retirees. Mrs. Combs, would you like to come over?
You, Dr. Berthew. Thank you so much. Dr. Berthew is going to join me down here because we have some special presentations to make to everyone, but I want to begin by saying what an honor it is for me to recognize our retirees this evening. Martha Cheeseman, Donna Dufour, Kay Alversen-Hillman, Nancy Karas, Dale Dymatopoulos, Sheila Sosik, and Judy Moody. This group of individuals joins a very illustrious group of individuals who have retired from the Lunenburg Public Schools, and each of these individuals here tonight has made really substantial contributions to our educational program in the district, and we are very grateful to all of you for all you've done. You've been leaders, you're highly regarded by all your colleagues, and time and time again, you have demonstrated the professionalism, the care, and the compassion that are characteristic of our faculty and staff, and we thank you, every one of you. So we're going to begin first with recognizing Ms. Martha Cheeseman. Martha, will you join us up here? And a big round of applause for Martha. So Martha is our department chair of the English Department at Lunenburg High School, and obviously an English teacher there, and she came to us after a career in business and then some other teaching areas outside our district, but she started in 2001, and she was raring to go, and she is still raring to go because she jumped in when she first came to our faculty and started to really connect with her students. I think that's what Martha is known best for in terms of planning competitive class plays, doing poetry slams, doing open mic night, and also becoming an advisor for not only the Gateway Literary Magazine, but also the Video Club. In order to make sure that students have every option available to them, Martha used a wide variety of media as she always wants her students to make sure that they have their voice, and she hears their voices. In the words of a colleague, "I appreciate and look up to Martha's professionalism and how she always seems to know the appropriate thing to say with an appropriate manner." So thank you, Martha. Martha tells us that her future plans include traveling, hiking, and some more gardening. So congratulations and thank you. We have a good one. And I'd like to recognize Donna Dufour next. Donna, will you join us?
Donna is currently at the primary school, teaching grade two, and she started subbing in the Lunenburg Public Schools in 1994. And in 1996, she was such a fabulous sub that she was offered a tutoring position where she won the hearts of students in order to go on to be a fourth-grade teacher, and just has done a remarkable job with students over the last 14 years. Students and staff have described Donna as fair, nurturing, supportive, flexible, one heck of a good singer, and also, I want to recognize one of the hallmarks of Donna's character is that she was always wherever she felt she could be of service to others. And she moved from fourth grade down to second grade and didn't skip a beat in terms of giving back to everyone. Donna says she doesn't have any definitive plans for retirement, but is looking forward to the discovery of that part of her life as well. Congratulations and thank you, Donna.
Kay Alversen-Hillman, Lunenburg High School, Foreign Language Department Chair and Teacher. Some colleagues may think Kay's career in Lunenburg started in the 1990s, but we know better because we have the file. Okay? It was (laughing). That's true. Actually, it was 1972, and Kay, at that time, was very involved in the school from cheerleading coach, titanic coach, to play advisor, to mock trial. You know, things haven't really changed a lot, have they? Because Kay continues to be one of those teachers at the high school who is always there to support kids and encourage them and give them opportunities to express themselves in so many different ways. Your sense of style and culture have brought students to new understandings of the world around them and about foreign language, and I always will appreciate, Kay, your teaching that Global Studies class and basing it on a community service learning project base. It was just a marvelous experience for those students, opening them to the world, which you've done for so many children. You're always ready to sing, to dance, and to speak Spanish. Hola! Your enthusiasm has been contagious to both staff and students, and I know that Kay is really looking forward to her retirement and spending a lot of time with her new granddaughter, Vivian. So congratulations and thank you. You've been marvelous. Ms. Sheila Sosik. Sheila has been at Lunenburg High School. You're going to love the story I found out about Sheila. This one I didn't know, actually. But Administrative Secretary and Guide to Secretary, and she started her career with Lunenburg, her effort to really attend to details, and her ability to really be a problem solver were recognized by staff, and that's what Sheila is in the office at Lunenburg High School, is a problem solver. She's also this wonderfully caring and giving individual, but the piece that was of interest to me is I found a commendation by the superintendent from 1986 that was given to you because you had developed a computer-generated grade point average and ranking class program. How about that? So little did we know that Sheila was actually our first technology expert in the district. That was one of our first hurdles with technology, and now this tech whiz continues to do never-ending questions for people, answering them, that is, about MMS, SIMs, EPIMS, Power School, and while at the same time juggling all the events of the front office. So Sheila takes this all in stride through a cheery and welcoming attitude. You're always there and you're always helping us, and we will miss you. We thank you so much. I know you plan to spend a lot of time at your camp in the Lake in Maine, I believe, right? And also spending some time with your wonderful husband, Tom, and the rest of your family. So thank you for being here with us for all the years that you've given and for everything you've done. Thank you, Sheila. Judy Moody, everyone. Now, before I start, I just want to tell you of this delightful story that Judy shared with me because I was talking to her today, and I said, "Think of all of those children that you've brought, the world of reading," which opens the world to children, too. And I think when you combine your years in Lunenburg plus your years that you spent outside the district, in Pittsburgh, it's 40 years of teaching children how to read. And one of the things that Judy told me about her decision to also go in and do her master's in reading was the day that she presented a book to a young early reader, and the joy that that brought him, having his own book and to be able to do that. And so she's brought that kind of impact to, you know, hundreds and hundreds of children, and it's been quite remarkable. So thank you for sharing with me that story. I just wanted to share it with everyone else, but you were a third-grade teacher here before you became our reading teacher, and you always had a big bag of tricks to entice children to learn and to help them learn. You were calm and caring in your demeanor, and you were meticulous and continue to be a meticulous planner, which is so important when teaching young children how to read. We thank you for those years doing reading recovery and helping struggling readers, and you've always been such a positive, caring, and helpful member of our faculty, and it's been an honor to have you as part of our team. And you're keeping your options open, but after that trip down under, maybe a lot of travel might be in your future. So thank you, Judy, for everything. Mr. Dale Dymatopoulos. Now Dale started in Lunenburg in 1981, and I have to say that when I watch him out on the field and in classrooms with students today, the energy, the enthusiasm, the passion that you have for teaching physical education, how to students, hasn't changed a bit since that first day, Dale. You've been a model for so many. You've done coaching, you've volunteered, your service to the school as a head football coach, a winner basketball director, and this one I didn't know, a floor hockey coach, I found. After-school floor hockey. But doing all of those things. You know, Dale, many of you will remember, in 1999 also received the Coach of the Year Award from the Sentinel Enterprise, and the students and the staff at Turkey Hill know of his commitment, the district knows of his commitments. In the words of your colleagues, "You have a passion for teaching, physical education, and health, and students are the benefactors, and everyone's going to miss you." We will all miss you, Dale. Thank you so much. And some golfing is in Dale's future. I know that's a surprise for everyone, so thank you, Dale. And Ms. Nancy Karas. Thank you. Nancy came to the Lunenburg Public Schools in September of 1981, actually a mere 27 days before Dale signed his contract. Nancy was teaching home economics, but I think all of us recall that time several years ago when we were making some budget reductions, that unfortunately that program was eliminated. And so Nancy stepped up and became a sixth-grade teacher and has been just an amazing teacher in sixth grade, particularly in math. I always enjoyed going into Nancy's classroom and watching her work with students and show them the delight of numbers and the joy of numbers. You often ran into Nancy after school as well, providing help to students making memory pillows, and a lot of time on Mount Waukesha, too, because for year after year, you introduced skiing and gave students that opportunity to go up to the mountain and ski after school. So in the words of your colleagues, "You are a woman of many talents and hats," and we wish you all the best in your retirement. I know you're planning on spending more time with friends and the family and doing some quilting and probably some more reading as well. So Nancy, thank you for everything and all your contributions.
Thank you.
One of the characteristics, just in closing, that I want to tell you about each one of these people is that I want to acknowledge each one of their generosity towards students as well as their colleagues. For each one of these individuals, I carry a special memory. I carry an act of kindness that each one of you had, that I saw you give to a student, and sometimes I was recipient of that as well. Those are the behind-the-scenes act of kindness that I will certainly remember forever, and I know the students that you shared those acts with will as well. These staff members are now passing the torch to a new generation, and it's my hope for each one of them that the benefits that our children derive from their dedication, their compassion, and hard work will be repaid to them in kind. We wish you all a long, happy, and healthy retirement sprinkled with memories of a successful and fulfilled career. On behalf of our school community, I extend to each of you my heartfelt thanks and sincere appreciation for your service to the Lunenburg Public Schools. Thank you.
to share that time with us tonight. Let's see, I don't have a chair's report tonight except to point out that graduation is coming up on Saturday, and that'll be a great event. It's a great culmination of the career for a bunch of our students, and I'm sure it'll be a wonderful day. Okay, we do have some minutes. Did you guys have a chance to read the minutes over? Any concerns, changes? Nope? Okay, so we'll consider those minutes approved. There are warrants on the table, and we'll sign them and send them down. Any line item transfers, Mrs. Combs?
No line item transfers, Dr. Berthew, but I do have the integrated agreement with the Lunenburg Professionals. After the MOAs were voted and signed, you know, the next step is for us to integrate those memorandums of agreement into the contract itself. And so Ms. Peterson in my office worked with me in helping get those prepared. We have shared those with the various groups, and we have this one here tonight that has been signed. You know, it was ratified by the particular unions through the MOA process. And so these are the integrated agreements that are ready for the committee's signature, and we can just pass them. They don't require any further action.
Great. So just sign in the right-hand column.
Yes. Okay.
That's okay. And superintendent's report, Mrs. Combs?
Yes, just tomorrow is Community Awards Night for our graduates, our graduating seniors. That begins, I believe, at 6:00 or 6:15 in the high school auditorium. It's always a very special evening, and you know, it's a time when we can recognize just how much the community is investing and continues to invest in our graduates through the variety of scholarships that are acknowledged and received that tomorrow night. So we look forward to that. We also had a very nice baccalaureate service, thanks to the committee that put that together. I have a program if anyone is interested in looking at that, and certainly appreciate everyone that participated and attended. I know that there's at least one member of the school committee that was on the trip, but I wanted to acknowledge the eighth-graders' trip to Washington, D.C., and also call to the committee's attention. I heard from chaperone after chaperone about how this group represented our community with pride, and Mr. John Mola was one of the chaperones that went, and I wanted to share with you a note that I received from him afterwards. He communicated to me as follows. "Thank you very much for the opportunity to be a chaperone for this trip. I have had the pleasure and honor to chaperone for this particular class on a few occasions, and I honestly cannot say enough about the class of 2018. What a wonderful, tremendous, exceptionally polite, and respectful group of young men and women. The town of Lunenburg should be very proud in knowing that the class of 2018 did a fine job representing the community and our nation's capital." And once again, that was from one of the chaperones, Mr. John Mola. Also chaperoning as parents were Colleen Shapiro, Ann Mueller, Stuart Lenson, Richard Bishop, Greg Begum, and Kristen Boomegren. The faculty chaperones were Sharon McCullough and Sharon works to make sure that everything is in place. She coordinates on the side of the school. Mr. Rob McGrath, our assistant principal at the high school, went along as the administrator on the trip. Linda Colette, Pete McAuliffe, Amy Raboin, and Kathy McGuire as our nurse on the trip. So our thanks to everyone. I don't know, Ms. Shapiro, if you have anything to add that I might have left out there?
I don't know that you left anything out. I will say that the trip, it was fabulous. The kids were great, the chaperones, the staff was great. It runs like a well-oiled machine, that trip, you know? The kids are busy, and we see everything, but everybody gets where they need to go, and so my hat is off to Mrs. McCullough and everybody who has anything to do with the organizing, and Faith Merchant from Merchant Vacations, who does it. It was amazing, and the kids are tremendous. You know, I get teary.
It's a night for tears, I think.
They represented us so well, and there were so many times that they were just so respectful that it was really wonderful.
Thank you.
And I'm a sap.
I wanted to also acknowledge Kalen Curlici from Turkey Hill Middle School. She is a semifinalist in the National Amateur Poetry Competition at this time. Yes, quite amazing. Her poem's going to be published in the Poetry Anthology across the way is where it's going to be published, and it's already published on the teeninc.com website. So certainly, congratulations to Kalen. That's a wonderful recognition, and I'll try to make sure that I send out, and we posted our website as well, the poetry that has brought her this amazing recognition. Mr. Mackin, I knew that you would have a particular interest in that, so I also wanted to congratulate several of our students who were, their art was exhibited last night at Nishoba Arts. It's a program where local young artists are provided an opportunity to exhibit their art, and our high school art teachers made this option available for some of their students, and over eight students at the high school participated and had their artwork there, and I was able to take that art show in before I went to baccalaureate last night, and was just delightful. Lunenburg was extremely well-represented there. I do have one little snapshot that Mrs. Giuliani sent of two of our ninth graders, and I'll just pass that down, but it's our intent to see if we can't get this published at the website, too, just to acknowledge these young artists and the fine work that they're doing. And of course, Mr. DePerry as well as Mrs. Giuliani for supporting them in their efforts and helping get the art transported there. I don't know how many of you were able to attend the eighth-grade spring concert, oh, the eighth grade, I'm sorry, the middle school spring concert was last Thursday night. It was another just delightful concert full of a lot of joy, and at that concert, one of our graduating seniors, Isaiah Rollinson, who had been helping out over the year with Mr. A., he's been helping fill in some spots in the middle school band that maybe there aren't instrumentalists for, but he received a recognition from the American Federation of Musicians for being an outstanding senior musician, and I just wanted to call that accomplishment to your attention as well. And finally, I want to make an announcement relative to, we saw the retirees tonight, and tonight I'm also announcing that Ms. Jaclyn Favoro will be appointed to the grade one position at the Lunenburg Primary School for the 2014-2015 school year. Jackie has served as a paraprofessional in our district for several years, as well as being a reading assistant and also a long-term substitute in other school districts surrounding us. So we certainly are very happy to have Jackie join our faculty down there. And Mr. Justin Sparks has been appointed to the grade two position. You know, Mr. Sparks is currently in teaching third grade there, but he was interested in a change in order to experience different grade levels, and we're welcoming him to the grade two position, and we'll be posting, in fact, before I came here tonight, we opened the posting for a grade three position. So congratulations and welcome to those two staff members.
Outstanding.
And that will be my superintendent's report tonight.
Okay, great. Mr. Mackin, do you have a school building report?
Yes, a couple of updates from our last meeting. We have had several important meetings since our last meeting. On Thursday of last week, I mean, Tuesday of last week, the superintendent and I met with the executive director of the MSBA, Jack McCarthy, along with the assistant executive director, Barbara Hansberry, just as a, to ensure the continuing smooth process in moving forward with the MSBA. It was a very positive meeting, and we were very happy for their time. We did attend an interesting training session last Thursday that was jointly held with the MSBA and the Inspector General's Office, and it laid out a lot of important information on the entire process of working with the MSBA for school building. Today, the Board of the Massachusetts School Building Authority met, and we attended, the superintendent and I attended, along with our town manager, and we were also pleased to have the attendance of Representative Jen Benson in support of the project, and the board of directors of the Massachusetts School Building Authority voted unanimously to approve the revised plan along with move towards a new project funding agreement, which we expect to have out shortly. So we're very pleased that that has happened, and we're very thankful for Representative Benson's ongoing support of the project.
Great. That's outstanding news. Thank you. Okay, we're on to new business, and our first item of business is the Turkey Hill Middle School's School Improvement Plan. We do this every June. It's time again.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here to present Turkey Hill Middle Schools 2004 School Improvement Plan. But before I begin, I'd just like to take this time to recognize my school advisory council. For most of the members on that council, this is their second year of a two-year commitment. Just what a great group of dedicated and passionate people that not only helped create this school improvement plan, but helped advise me through some of the challenges that we had in reconfiguration, and infused our school with some great ideas and viewpoints. It was just what a great process of collaboration and an awesome experience, and I'd just like to thank them for their time and dedication. So when our council started talking and working together about two years ago, we determined that we wanted three measurable goals to improve our school, and we wanted to create activities and practices that would support the achievement of those goals. So those activities could be a one-year or a two-year duration depending on its complexity. So I don't want to read the plan to you, that's in front of you, but rather I'd like to explain the major components, if that's okay with the committee, and then I can answer any questions that you have. Our goals focus on improving student learning, supporting social-emotional growth, and increasing the use of technology that supports students, teachers, and parents. So our So, our first goal is to increase student learning and improve students' ability to think critically and achieve at high levels, as evidenced by improved MCAS growth data and annual PPI scores. So, in order to measure whether we achieved this goal, it was a difficult task that we've been kind of struggling with for a few years. And we have set up a method that we analyze the two-year averages of the MCAS median student growth percentile for each grade level, and that's provided to us by the state in September, when they do their public release of all of the data. So, we take each grade level content area to be performing between 50 and 60 percent median student growth percentile as meeting our objectives. So, we also use data provided on the 2013 PPI scores, and we'll look for an annual improvement based on the formula provided to us. And so, we hope to accomplish this goal by implementing the following practices, is that we continue to, with some of the proven strategies that we've been using over the years, such as the Great Books Critical Thinking Program throughout all of our content areas. And the program's foundation focuses on shared inquiry, and with teachers posing interpretive questions to students, defending their opinions by drawing evidence from the text. Great Books has been very successful in developing those higher-order critical thinking skills that are so important in making kids college and career-ready. Also, all of our faculty be working this year in developing district-determined measures in all subject areas that represent a reliable measure of student growth in each subject. So, one of our other activities is that we continue to refine our response to intervention model, to ensure that all students are supported and that they're also challenged. Our response to intervention continues to improve and grow. We have had the development of universal accommodations for all students in all classrooms to ensure that everybody is successful. A piece of that RTI model includes intervention blocks, where teachers can work with students and support them in specific skill development, or they can also work with students who are high achievers and require some enrichment activities. So, as we were working with school council this year, they had some great ideas that we wanted to infuse into our student learning goal. One of those is that during intervention blocks, come September, that we want to do some project-based activities that target our higher-achieving students, so that they remain challenged and engaged during this intervention block. So, students will be identified through our results model of data collection and identification. And as always, during our results meetings, we'll be reporting out faculty on specific goals related to the improvement in all content areas in the school. And I believe most of our, some of our professional development for next year is revolving around project-based learning. So, it ties in with our school improvement goal, and also with the professional development goals of the district. Our second goal addresses the social-emotional needs of the students, and it reads that the social-emotional needs of every student will be supported through direct instruction and group settings, utilizing continued proven interventions. And we're going to assess the effectiveness of the social-emotional program by decreasing the number of office referrals that we get for behavioral, and look for a decrease in those referrals. So, when we reconfigured two years ago, we kind of, we meshed in two different social-emotional programs into a building. Grades four and grades five do what we call, it's a responsive classroom, and then grades six and grades seven do a very similar program, which is called developmental designs. They're actually created by the same company, which is Origins, and developmental design is a responsive classroom for the middle, for the middle school, with more of an advisory group-type program. So, when we reconfigured, we've been working to determine what's the best measure in order to meet those. So, as we move forward, we really want to increase the amount of time that fourth and fifth grader doing morning meeting, so that we can have more interactions with peers and more teacher interaction in those small groups of learning, doing more greetings, doing more sharing. In the seventh grade, we're going to actually, we've adopted a new text that's come out by Origin, it's called Face-to-Face, and it really works upon that collaboration piece and that perspective-taking, that thing's so important for those seventh graders moving up into the high school. So, it'll be a whole new platform for the advisory, for those CPR groups that we do in grade six and grade seven. So, grade seven will have the new text that will focus on that perspective-taking, but that allows grade six to utilize some more of the advisory groups from where they were sharing a text with seventh grade. So, some of the things that we were doing in seventh grade, now we'll be able to possibly do in the sixth grade. So, I look forward to that. We're going to do some professional development around that also in September. And our school advisory council, also, they wanted to continue enhance the programs that we have in place to support the social-emotional growth of all of our students, programs like peer mediation and Big Sibs program, where high school students come down and they work with some specific fourth and fifth graders to develop that independent and some problem-solving skills. We've had it now for two years. High school students come down on Wednesday afternoons, they meet with kids for about 40 or 50 minutes, they do hands-on activities, almost like a big brother, big sister program. It's just been really successful. You can see the kids in the fourth and the fifth grade really beginning to grow and mature in that program. So, we want to continue to make sure that we're continuing to enhance those programs. Our third goal is to utilize wireless technology to support reliable communication between school and home, and continue to build our capacity to provide technology in the classroom instruction. And we would like to utilize a uniform web-based homework site, which I'll talk about a little bit in a few minutes. But I just wanted to point out where we've come from in terms of parent-school communication via web-based programs. If you look, in 2010 and 2011, we had 171 parents accessing the online gradebook that we were using at that time. In 2014, we had 24,841 sign-ins by parents to view the online gradebook. We know that there is still room for improvement, but we have made great strides in the areas of that home-school communication piece via the website. So, we continue to focus on bringing technology into the classroom, and I've added, we have added another iPad cart with 30 iPads, thanks to the generous donation from the PTO. We have seen an increase in the utilization of these devices and instruction for web-access, for research of topics and applications, and support of student learning. We would like to see Google Docs be utilized more effectively in the classroom, because that really improves in the collaboration with both students and students, and also students and teachers. And we want to be able to provide a uniform web-based homework site for parents and students. As I talked with my council, they expressed some frustration as you move from grade to grade, or even as you move from teacher to teacher, the lack of reliability on to go to one spot in order to be able to bring up homework for the building. So, we really identified that as a place where we should improve, and we felt like grades four through seven, we should have the same site, it would make it more comfortable for parents, students would be more comfortable, they won't have to worry about when they transition to a different grade level, where they could find their homework or assignments online. So, come September, we're hoping to have that in place. Now, of course, this document's fluid, and it's always changing, and we will be updating it after the public release of the MCAS data in September. And I'll provide you with a revised update edition of the plan to the committee, I believe it's in late October, early November. Are there any questions?
Excuse me, yes. So, how do you, so when you look at these plans, they're sort of top-level, they talk about, you know, big-picture sorts of things, but when we look at the data, you see that the performance is not uniform, right? There are some places where we're doing really well, some places we're not doing as well. How targeted are your interventions? So, if we go, for example, Goal One, and look at the specific activities you're doing to address Goal One, how are you targeting these to the areas where we're weakest to ensure the greatest impact?
Well, we've provided professional development, like we've had our grades four and grades five come in, and we're not familiar with the Great Books model, so we had provide professional development with a person that would come right to our buildings that specifically worked with those grade levels, to ensure that that activity would be in place. As far as the RTI and the intervention, that we work during those faculty meetings in order to, one, identify groups of students who need to be working on a specific skillset that would improve their scores, and rotate through teachers through those groups in order to make sure that we're seeing success.
So, if I look at this, and if I was to look at the data, and I'm not going to go into specifics, it looks to me like maybe there is some curriculum alignment issues or in some of the areas. So, are you reviewing how well-aligned your curriculum is in all the grades to the Common Core? I see that's in here. Are there any areas you're particularly targeting?
Well, we're working at developing and aligning our curriculum maps. Actually, we have some work that's being done this summer in order to get that done. So, we are constantly revising and reviewing where areas of weakness, and we are targeting those areas for support.
Okay. So, we can address this more in November?
Sure, absolutely.
Any other questions from the committee comments, thoughts on the plan? Okay, thank you, Tim.
Sure. The superintendent asked me to just give you a brief update on the PARC assessments, if that's okay?
Sure.
Actually, today, we finished our final PARC test session, end of the year, at Turkey Hill. So, just to review, yeah. It's been a long testing window. Yes, it has been. So, Turkey Hill participated in assessments for both the performance-based and the end-of-the-year assessment. So, that puts us, only 10% of the classrooms in the Commonwealth were asked to do that, and we did that. It was about five, it was about 14 sessions with two classrooms from each grade level. Grade five is doing ELA, grade six, ELA, and grade seven, mathematics. Of course, I can't review any of the test questions, or for test security, but in kind of asking students how they felt, just their comfortability level in taking it, the feedback that they gave me was that the content wasn't tripping them up. It was the technology and the glitches that they were using in the technology that was more frustrating for them. You know, I went on and I looked on some PARC documents, and it said that 46% of the students that took the math test experienced a technology issue. I mean, that's one in two students. I just think that's a huge number. And 31% of the students that took the ELA PARC assessment experienced some technological glitch that. And when we're taking a standardized, high-stakes test, and when it's a timed test, that's really concerning to me, and whether, when we, if we're going to become early adopters of PARC, I would be apprehensive to do that until all of these glitches were being worked through. So, I just wanted to bring that information on how that went. So, I think our students felt comfortable with the information on the tests. It's the glitches that were provided to us through that technology that were frustrating.
And did any of your special-needs students participate in that?
Yes.
And how did the adaptations go for those students, if there were any that were necessary?
There were adaptations. We had some text-to-speech and speaks-to-text that you could administer. Performance-based in the mid-year did not go well. By the end of the year assessment, those were up and running for them. They have some other type of accommodations, as highlighting or changing the back of the color also of the screen for the accommodations for kids of special needs.
Okay. Great. Any comments on PARC?
And just to speak more to the technology pieces, we do not have the capacity to do PARC next year online. There's no capacity that is robust enough that we have available. We don't have the number of devices, the kinds of devices that are necessary to do that. So, you know, PARC for us next year would not be an option if it's an online option. It would have to be paper, pencil.
And to shift from one paper, pencil test to another paper, pencil test, I don't see how that's kind of forging forward.
Great. I've made my opinion clear. I'm PARC, so I won't do it again.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Blaisdell's going to talk about the primary school improvement plan.
Good evening.
Hello.
Thank you. I'm here as well to talk about the primary school improvement plan. And I, too, would like to first start out by thanking the school advisory council members who served this year and developed this school improvement plan. On the committee was Chad Adams, the assistant principal, Jen Begley, who's served for two years, Tracy Karen, who's been on for about four years, Brendan Kibbie, who's been working with us for two years. Our teachers were Sherri Flynn, who's been working with us for a year, Mary Beth Ford, a kindergarten teacher for three years, Justin Sparks, the grade-three teacher for a year, Joanne Londa, grade-one for a year. Our school committee representative was Colleen Shapiro, thank you, for three years. And our community representative has been BJ Carboni. She's been working with us for about four years. So, it's a wonderful group that's very dedicated to helping us be as successful as we can at the primary school. What we did, as far as our structuring our meetings this year, is each time we met, we reviewed one goal, talked a lot about the results that we had received throughout the year, and updated them as to where we were on each one of the goals as we went through the year. At the end of the year, we talked a lot about the structure of our plan, and how we would like to see this moving forward. The team felt, again, that we should have four goals, a goal in the area of reading, written language, math, and social-emotional learning. In the area of ELA, teachers had adapted and implemented seven more model curriculum units, in addition to the four model curriculum units that they had implemented the year before. So, those were shared with the committee, and we talked about that. Our teachers spent a lot of time in their common planning time choosing those lessons from the Race to the Top format, and really looking at them as to the rigor that they presented, and then adapting some of them to make sure that they were beefy in their presentation. The second grade had done an author study with Tommy DiPaolo, and they had beefed that up quite a bit, and then had an activity at the very end of the unit where the children developed their own books. And it was amazing to see them think about the author, Tommy DiPaolo, and what he put in, what she put into her books, and why she had written them the way he had. And then, to see that voice in their own books today was pretty amazing. This coming year, teachers will be revising and updating their curriculum maps in the area of ELA. These maps will include the model curriculum units, common experiences, the junior-grade book experiences. At this point, at each grade level, we have six to eight junior-grade books being reviewed, and that's a common experience for all of our students. And then, continuing with our common assessments. If you know, a couple of years ago, we brought the Ames Web down and started to use that for our students. Teachers are working with those results to set up response-to-intervention groups for students, and to provide not only interventions for those students that are struggling, but then also the enrichment on the other end. The Ames Web provides us with book lists on whatever given level that our children are achieving. on whatever given level that our children are achieving so that the teachers are then getting a hold of those books and making sure that their Just Right Fit books are in their tubs and that we're moving children forward. The other thing that teachers had done two years ago was Reader's Workshop. Reader's Workshop really does do a lot with student-to-teacher conferencing and making sure that they're moving children from the skills and levels that they're at, you know, with little mini lessons throughout the, the week and then lots and lots of direct reading in their Just Right Fit tub books with specific skills that each child is working on, individual skills. Rubrics will also be revised and developed to include a critical thinking component and problem-solving component to our, our reading. Junior grade books has a good, nice, beefy one and, and in fact, the members of the school advisory council, a couple of them being teachers, had even brought some other forms, rubrics together, forward that the, that the teachers will be looking at. In the area of written language, we have implemented Handwriting Without Tears curriculum strategies on all of the pre-K through second grade level. Over the last three years, teachers have developed common expectations for handwriting and dedicated time each week to skill development. We have implemented Six Traits Writing Curriculum on each grade level and utilized Writer's Workshop daily in our classrooms. This coming year, we will be shifting focus from, onto improving student written output in a variety of genres, persuasive writing, narrative writing, descriptive writing, informational. Use it, you know, we'll be utilizing the Six Traits Writing rubrics and adding rubric components to measure growth in, in the genre writing areas. In the area of math, we will focus on improving students' ability to communicate number sense and math reasoning. We have been utilizing student data on common assessments to improve instruction, instructional strategies and strengthening identified areas of weakness in the curriculum during our results meetings. Teachers have implemented RTI to differentiate instruction for students, providing enrichment for those students who need to be challenged and reviewing and reinforcing skills for those students that have not yet reached the benchmark. Again, the Ames Web assessments being utilized to identify those levels of need. The program is set up in such a way that it also provides various lessons that you might, you know, that you would be, be encouraged to work on in more, in a more intensive way with, with students. Goal four is a social-emotional curriculum or the social-emotional goal that we have. It's a focused around school climate. We can continue to feel that this is a, an important goal for us to work on for another year. This year, we have focused on school-wide positive behavioral supports. If you walk into the cafeteria, you'll see a beautiful chain running all the way around the cafeteria and on each chain is some kindness that a child has done for another child or for a teacher or, you know, for a family member. The chain has been put together and strung around the, the cafeteria. We also have two boards that are in the cafeteria. Again, if you remember our goal from last year, it was to provide some visual representations, bringing that, the responsive classroom strategies that are being used and utilized in the classroom into the, the whole life of the school and the whole, you know, the building, make it a building-wide program. But all, always using the same common language. So there's two boards in there and the same kind of premise. Students are invited up to share what some, what kindness somebody else has done for them and then that person's name and what they did is put up on the board in the cafeteria. So that was one of our goals, to try to make that as visual as possible. We also established after-school activities that were very, very popular. Very popular. The first session ran just after the Christmas break in January and every child that signed up participated. And the reason that we were able to do that is we had started the process, we had randomly picked the names out of hats, making sure that it was as fair a process as possible for participation in the after-school activities. And when I came to the staff the next morning and said, okay, now I've done all the division, I have the students that have made it and you have those in your box and you have the names of the students that didn't make it and oh, we just can't do that to them. And three other teachers stepped forward to make sure that every child that had signed up for that first after-school activity were able to participate. So we expanded some of our nature and outdoor activities and we expanded our mad science group and made sure that everybody could be involved. So those groups that ran for two sessions were cooking, origami, student council. What else? We had, let me see. I lost my place. Student council, origami, mad science, nature and outdoor, and cooking. Okay? And poetry. I can't forget poetry. So all of those activities took place. It really provided a great opportunity for our students to meet with children from other grade levels. We, in several of the groups, we had kindergartners working with third grades, right, you know, third graders. So side by side, all helping each other to follow through with a recipe and produce a, a cooking product. And, and the, the teachers actually, because in the first time that it went out, it was an error in one, one or two cases that it was going to be open to all grades. They, they were originally thinking it should be just second and third graders. And I said, well, you can't change it now. And then they just left it that way because it was so successful. Our students are really willing to help each other out and, and have really enjoyed those after-school activities. The biggest plus for us out of that, and I think you've heard a little bit about this the last time you were together, was the school council. That group really has taken on quite a bit. The premise behind the group is to be problem solvers and, and ambassadors of kindness. They've done a number of things to promote positive, a positive learning environment in the school and we certainly want to continue that as we move forward. So that is part of our, our fourth goal is to engage our students as often as we can into assisting us with the improvement of our, our school culture. So that was the fourth goal. And I think that I'm pretty much done. If I have any questions, there was a lot of data in the plan and again, that will be updated as well as we move forward. The end-of-the-year data is just now coming in from the DRAs and the writing samples and the math, district math assessments. Those are all being uploaded right now. So as soon as we get those, then we'll be able to add those into our plan so that you have another update. Okay?
So adding in specific targeted growth measures, right?
Does anybody have any questions? So how do you guys manage the, the vertical integration across the boundary between the primary and the Turkey Hill building? Like, how do you make sure that, you know, you're, if you learn you're doing some great thing at third grade? Does Tim know what that is and so that he can continue it in fourth grade?
Well, in our admin meetings, we're constantly talking about the different things that we're doing and the different grade levels.
Okay, so you don't see that there's a, you know, there's always the potential for a valley of death between buildings when students move across those boundaries where everything changes and, and students have a lot of relearning to do. You guys believe that you've got that covered?
I think it's pretty solid with the responsive classroom right now being, you know, the same pre-K through five. Is that correct?
It is, but we do more of it on an individual basis too, that we go through and we identify each student and what type of learning style they have and what type of achievement they have. And we do that through, through vertical grouping between the third and the fourth grade when they're coming up. So we get an idea of where they are, we get their scores, we understand what learning style they best work with and then we place them in that way. Does that make, make sense?
Sure. Just part of what we're talking about, part of what Ms. Blaisdell was talking about is specific language that gets used and things like that. Is that language shared across that boundary? Or is the vocabulary suddenly totally different in fourth grade that, you know, that the kids have been accustomed to a certain language in the primary building?
With the responsive classroom, that's the language I'm talking about. That's the vocabulary I'm talking about as far as the, and so that.
And it's the same vocabulary at the middle school?
A responsive classroom is, but that would be an area I would like to improve upon is, is that, that, the common vocabulary between grade levels and vertical team, if we can find time to do that. Sorry, didn't mean to cut in.
No, absolutely not. Loxie also asked me to talk about PARC a little bit. You know, we've been monitoring the PARC assessments that have been going at the, going on at the middle school as well as a number of the, the PowerPoints that the state has put out, you know, as far as helping districts determine, you know, MCAS versus PARC and when, when to make that move. And, you know, we, as an administration, looked at that slide presentation and I also shared it with the third grade staff and, and asked for them to give us some input. And, you know, what, when we began our discussion, one of the things that started to come up was the, the use of the technology. Teachers really didn't think that they would have a lot of difficulty with the, with the content. You know, we've moved to the Common Core, we're, we're teaching the Common Core, so we don't believe that they would have issues with the content. But we really feel like we would need to really think about some technology curriculum that should be embedded and started grade one on to start to get our students more used to performing, using the technology, demonstrating their skills, using the technology, typing, the, all of those kinds of things, especially if PARC is, is timed. You know, to, to make sure that those kind of things are in place before we do that and that we would want to take this next year and the year after if we can to make sure we're, we're really ready for our students. You know, the technology in the building, having it, the building be wireless. I know that we're on track to be able to do that this coming year. But having that set and having the technology available to use and practice some of the skills that they would be required to, to perform on using, in the PARC assessment would be important. So that's kind of where we are.
Thank you. Park questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're not going to vote on this. We don't have to vote on it. Thank you. Will we have the high school one next time?
Yes.
Great. All right, so we have some policies to talk about tonight.
We do. There are three policies. Two of them are new policies. Actually, all three of them are, are new policies. You have the packet there altogether in, in one packet there. I don't really consider this first reading, I haven't identified where these are going to fit in terms of numbering into the policy manual, but we do want to, to start getting these out there for discussion. This policy committee met on Monday this last evening and I appreciated the feedback that they provided to me. So some of these policies, there's an area where districts need to customize it for their districts and that input was very helpful in terms of getting an initial draft to you. So the fingerprint-based criminal history record information, this is a requirement for all new employees. It's, I think we talked about this a little bit last time. The, the requirement has been in there since July 2013, but there wasn't a mechanism in place, an infrastructure in the, in place in the state yet to actually begin the implementation. That infrastructure now is in place and, and we are putting the policy in place and then we will start enacting this process. This provides for how we do this and who's required to do it. And basically, it's every employee, every new employee of the district will be required to have both a quarry check and a fingerprint-based criminal history check which goes into a national database. So it's a, it's a broader investigation. There is a cost that the employee bears with regard to getting this done and there's a procedure where they access and, and one of the sites that's available for employees in this area, it will be in Lemonster, I understand, is where that will be located. Now, what we have done with this policy is we have not required that chaperones and chaperones and volunteers necessarily go through this fingerprinting. Substitutes will need to have the fingerprinting, but we haven't done those areas, but we've reserved the right to do them. And I think on overnight trips and those kinds of trips, it may be an area that we want to pursue. We will have to have some discussion in terms of would those volunteers, would that be paid for by the district or by the trip, through the funding that is generated to operate the trip. So those are some of the procedural pieces that we still need to work out. What we've done though is basically reserve the right to call for it as appropriate. And so I, I can see this as being something when we begin to talk about trips that are overnight trips. The chaperones with that is, is incorporating that into our approval processes. What's our determination around the fingerprinting pieces? Quarries are required for everyone. Okay? Also, this just outline, I'm sorry.
The, and the thinking behind where to kind of draw the line is, is whether anyone would have unsupervised time with any of the students. Isn't that the thinking behind it?
Direct and unmonitored contact is, yes, it is.
I just want to point out that it wasn't just, that there was, there was some thought behind why we, why we drew the line where we drew it.
And this is for only new employees, correct? Is it new employees?
New employees, as of 2000.
Wouldn't be anybody who's already in this, in the district.
Employees. It wouldn't be employees.
Okay.
And just to make sure people understand, right, the quarry check is only a Massachusetts state background check. This fingerprinting access is the national database.
That's all right. This policy outlines, per the state regulations, storage of this information, what our obligation and responsibility is, retention and destruction of that information, providing training to our personnel and that includes myself participating in training in terms of looking at these records and understanding the information that we have and how to interpret it. And then the standards for determining suitability. That's the language that's used relative to approval or non-approval when we look at that. And you can see there's several criteria that we look at there. If there is something on the record that would cause us to investigate further. So that's outlined in this policy. It, it provides also, what we reflected here, it was the determination and the recommendation from the policy committee, subcommittee, that we not accept second-party kinds of determinations. So in a nutshell, what that means is if we hire an employee who happened to be teaching or otherwise employed in another district, we would not accept that particular determination in our district. That option is available. I think that I know our thinking around this is even talking to and hearing about this process is that, that fingerprinting, that record is established at a point in time. And so it becomes outdated with the, the next time a whole new set of fingerprints goes into a database. It gets updated. I believe it was something like a five-day period. It's basically, it becomes an old record after five days because there's potential for updating at that point in time. And I think that's an important part. We're mindful of the costs around this, but we're particularly mindful of the safety and security of our students and for that reason are presenting that in this particular policy. policy that we will not accept those in from a second party, that we'll conduct them upon employment. So those, I believe, are the highlights, and we'll be posting these online after we do the first reading, which I anticipate will be at the next meeting.
One other important thing, I think, is that we are allowed to share under certain circumstances the results of these tests with other people that are authorized to have that information if we choose to do that. There's a lot of regulation around making sure that we're doing that appropriately and not inadvertently releasing private information, and so the recommendation of the policy committee was that we would set a policy that we would not share the results of the fingerprint checks with other districts who ask, for example, and, and let them go do it themselves so we don't, in order to avoid any possibility of inadvertently releasing data that we shouldn't, and to minimize the compliance checking that we have to deal with.
And yet, on the other hand, there are certain things that if information through that check comes to us, we are obligated to report to the commissioner as well.
Right, so it's this complicated mixed bag.
But this was based on a model that was provided to us by the state to ensure that we are incorporating the aspects into this around the storage and care and, and release. So that was the formation of this policy was through that state model.
So that's going to be on the website for comment, even though we're not reading it. We're not having a formal reading tonight. So if anybody has comment, feedback, drop an email, make a phone call, that'd be great.
The next policy that we worked on is related to our school lunch program, and it's around insufficient funds or negative balances. We've never had a written procedure in place in terms of addressing this, and, and it is really time that we put something in place because we continue to spend a lot of time and energy and resources of the district trying to make sure that these accounts are not in the negative, and there unfortunately are some that have climbed to some, some significant levels in my mind, and yet we really don't have a procedure in place that says this is what we're going to do when that happens if payment isn't made. Now, one of the things that we talked about in this policy is, one of the reasons that in our district those, those accounts, deficit accounts grow is because it's our philosophy that children need to be well-nourished in order to participate, engage, and have productive learning environments. There are districts that have basically no lunch policy. If students' accounts are in deficit, the students don't eat, and that is not a policy that we're comfortable with. We feel that this is an adult problem, if you will, and we shouldn't make it a child problem, and one that impacts their learning opportunities. And so what we've done here, and I appreciate the input from the policy subcommittee, is to outline the number of reminders that are going out, and after a 30 days of an account from the initial notification of that account being in deficit, this provides for a penalty of an 18% interest, and, and it continues to then if that account isn't taken care of within 90 days, my recommendation is that we look at giving it to a collection agency. So that's all outlined here. It also talks about checks returned for non-sufficient funds. I want to underscore with this, whenever families are, are found in this situation, we, the, the alerts are very, they're every Friday. Every Friday, there are notices in terms of if accounts are at all in deficit, as much as $1, there's an alert that goes out. For families that use RevTrack, that is set, so it sends an alert when it gets to a low balance. As soon as it gets below $6, you get an alert that the balance... And so we really feel like with the technology that we've provided a lot of information to families about these accounts, and so they have that knowledge. And we also make sure that we communicate with families around the opportunity for applying for free and reduced lunch as well. So I just want to assure everyone that we, our first step is to work with families and see if we can assist them in getting it resolved, if it's filling out forms, if it's making out of where. But it is of concern for us, and I feel this policy will be, and our, a good ability to really communicate the steps that are going to be involved and, and the consequences around this. So it talks about payments, it talks about return checks, and it also talks about what happens with refund or any unclaimed funds, enrolling funds forward from year to year. Parents, if a student has a balance at the end of the year, that balance remains until the next year when they come back to school. But hopefully, this will provide some additional information and help everybody understand how important it is that this take place.
I just have a quick question. I know last year there was a bunch of people who had alternative lunches given to them, and the parents were a little upset. Is that something you could include in the policy, that they would get an alternative lunch?
So we did discuss that, and we felt that, you know, again, the philosophy we're trying to take or implement is one where the student is not impacted. So we've had, we had sample policies where the students who have a deficit are required to go to the office and call their parent and tell them that they're out of money. That's just cruel and unusual, and I think making it clear to everybody in the room that the student doesn't have a positive balance because they have a...
Different lunch.
A different lunch is really penalizes the student as well. So we're trying to get away from that and focus on the parents. The bottom line is, the parents are responsible for paying for the lunch. Our deficit is actually large.
Yeah.
Right now, it's...
$9,000?
Yeah, that's, that's a lot of money.
That's completely unacceptable.
Yeah, it is.
And so we're trying to make it clear to the parents that this is an obligation they have, and the consequences will be on the parents, not the students.
Right, and that's tough.
Right.
When the, they don't really see consequences when, when the child gets lunch every day.
Right.
It's a tricky, it's really tricky.
Right.
Which is why, you know, I support the approach, which is that this is not the child's problem, this is the...
Exactly.
This is the, the adult's problem.
Yeah.
And to keep it focused on the adults. Just because I don't have that level of, of knowledge, what's, what's the current cost of, of lunch for a day?
$2.75.
$2.75.
Yeah.
So that's a lot of lunches if, to get to $9,000.
I think it's $109. Well, $109, like on the, well, there was the, when certain families were at 300, I saw in the, and that was 109 days of not paying for your lunch. That's excessive.
That is. And again, as Mrs. Colm said, if there is a family who's having difficulty paying, we'll certainly work with them, but they have to actually engage with us.
Yeah, they have to have a conversation. They can't just...
You can't just ignore these things.
And then people can't be annoyed when they get reminders to pay.
Right.
It's just like a bill.
Absolutely.
It is. Okay.
Any other comments on this one? Because this is also not a first reading. We are putting it out there. We would love to get feedback from parents on what, if this is the wrong, if, if people think this is the wrong way to go about encouraging people to pay their bills, they should tell us and come up with other alternatives and work.
Well, I know they've mentioned that the, certain people get calls when they have a quarter or what. I said, but you have to understand there are other people who owe more than a quarter.
Right.
Oh, I've gotten the dollar call on a Friday afternoon on every possible phone number and email, my husband's email.
I've never gotten a call, but...
Yeah, well, I've had a dollar, dollar, dollar fifty.
Really?
I'm like, okay!
My, my son...
Okay, it goes in on Monday, but it, so you can't, it's not like it comes on one, it comes on every single...
The other stuff.
Avenue that the school has to reach you in case of anything, that balance notification comes in.
It's an automated notification.
It is.
You cannot be unaware.
Right.
Right, that's what I mean. You really do get it, you know, and it makes me pay.
You can't claim that you're unaware of the problem.
This is always a hot button issue.
Every Friday, it's automated, and it goes out on, in your Power School settings in your, our Blackboard Connect. It basically, it's, it's part of the notification system, it's not emergency, but it goes to all of those information pushes that you have put in there as your options, so it, you get it.
Right, no, it doesn't tell you that it's an emergency, right, but it just comes on all those avenues.
Okay.
So you can't miss it.
So we welcome feedback.
$9,000, isn't it?
For us, yeah. Okay.
The criminal offender record information policy, the Corey policy, we have had this implemented for years and been doing it for years. When I went to find the good spot to put the fingerprinting policy in, I noticed that our policies reference getting Corey checks done, but we did not have a Corey policy that talks about how these records are maintained. And so this, once again, is one that's offered by the state in terms of the things that, how we access, how we train individuals to protect the information, who gets access to the information. That's a very small population of people that have access to that information, and they're specifically trained for that. So that's the other policy that we'll post up there as a, as a draft at this point in time.
I just have a quick question about headquarters. I know that there are multiple areas in town that you have to be Corey'd in, some people have said church, it's Girl Scouts, it's at school. Is there a central place that we, there's nothing, right?
No, because of the sensitivity of the information, it's another one of those areas that the people that are collecting the information want to make sure that the information they have is, is valid, untainted information, so we get it directly from the source, and we can't share it with anyone. So there's not even that option in terms of Corey's, of second-party sharing.
So every organization needs their own.
Their own. I just want to be able to...
It's not just the school. Girl Scouts won't take the school, soccer won't take it.
Right.
Right.
Because there was one year I had four.
Exactly.
Still okay.
Yeah, and you just wonder, because it costs money for each organization, if there was a more effective way to...
I don't think...
The investment, it's, it's a service that's provided free, the, the resources to do it is basically the input, and then any printing of the documents.
Oh, okay.
Nonprofits don't pay that much.
But there's not a, a charge. The state provides it.
Okay.
Other questions, comments on the policies? Now's a good time. Okay, so we don't have any old business. Is there any public comment? Anybody up here want to give any public comment? Are public such as it is? Okay. Reports, I don't have a finance committee report. School councils clearly have been working on the improvement plans. Are there feedback on those? Nope, okay. PTO?
We have not met since the last meeting, but we do have our spring fling coming up on Saturday, I mean, Sunday, from three to seven. So there'll be a lot of things going on there. New York Life is coming to do fingerprinting and child IDs, and the Remax balloon will be there for hot air balloon rides. So hopefully, people will show up. The weather's supposed to be lovely. I hope people leave their pools to come and attend. So...
Sounds great.
Yeah.
Is there any charging built?
Excuse me, what?
Is there, is there a charge for the...
No, you can go in for free.
Cool.
Yeah, you just have to pay to get on like the other stuff.
So if I want a balloon ride, I can...
Yeah, you can definitely come to, to take a balloon ride.
Don't crash into my house.
I would float across the...
Okay, policy subcommittee has been working on these policies you heard about. Capital planning should be done for the year. Wellness advisory committee?
We haven't met since the last...
Okay. PACSEL?
They have a meeting next Friday, the 13th, at 11 o'clock at TCP.
Okay. The Acceptance and Diversity Advisory Committee is scheduled to meet a week from tomorrow on the 12th, and they will have their out briefing at our next meeting, which is two weeks from tonight. Is there a reuse committee update?
There was. We met on this past Monday, the 2nd of June. The, added to the, the list of buildings under consideration by the committee, they now included the old primary school because the developer of the senior housing who had been looking at that has basically abandoned that plan, and so that has been added in to the, to the charge of the, of the committee, which now includes TCP, Brooks, Ritter, and Town Hall, as well as the old primary. The, there was some discussion, and, and we're going, I'm going to get some clarification with the superintendent, that there was an understanding that we haven't accessed TCP yet, and so I don't know what, the, the nature of the vote that we took prior to the, the vote by the citizens for the school, we expressly said that we were accessing the building should the vote be positive. I'm not sure whether that was not seen as sufficient or whether we need to take another vote, or, so we need some clarification on that.
Okay. We, we do need to continue to use the building until the new high school's open, so I'd hope nobody would kick us out.
Right.
If we need to take a vote, we can take a vote.
We have things going on.
Right. So we can figure out...
So anyway, that's, that's just, that's a, a question for, that needs to be resolved with the...
Okay, that's not a big deal to handle if we need to...
And then the group has a joint meeting with the planning committee. It's a workshop to better understand the village by law and how that affects, will affect the ultimate reuse of the buildings.
Okay. Any items for future discussion? Anybody would like to volunteer?
Dr. Bertham, I just, as you were talking about the program on Sunday and the child ID program, I know I reported out to you at the last meeting, but it wasn't televised, and when you asked the question, it was a televised meeting about whether DNA testing was part of that child ID, and it's not. I just felt I should put that on the record now since we're televised tonight, that there's photos, there's fingerprinting, there's a CD that you take away, but it's not DNA testing.
Okay, great. Okay.
Or sample, sorry.
We don't have any need for an executive session, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second...
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
Thank you for joining us.
Let's see, we need those contracts back.